We've been requested to move to 8.6. Consideration of vote to approve or not approve, receiving the audit report from Wilson, Dotson and Associates auditing firm. They are on, she is on the phone and would like to conference with us. Can we get to her?
This is Pam.
Hi Pam, this is Brenda. I have the board members here, so they are ready for you to make your presentation.
Okay. Is this a good level for everybody?
Can y'all hear her?
Can you hear me?
Is this?
I'm sorry.
Okay, can you talk louder?
Yes. How about this?
Can you guys hear?
Barely.
They can hardly hear you. Oh, okay, try it again.
Okay, how about this?
Oh yeah, there we go.
I just had to turn my phone.
Okay, does everybody have a copy of the three-page handout?
Yes, it's on top of your.
Okay. What I wanted to let you know about that, that is a communication. Did somebody say something?
No, huh-uh.
Okay. That is a communication letter that we are required to provide to the board. And in it, if we had had any difficulties getting information from staff, if you had changed accounting policies, or if we had problems even getting staff to talk to us, we would have put that information in this letter. We did not have any of those difficulties, so this is very standardized wording. It's something that will help you go to sleep at night. Now, as far as your audit report itself, I went over it with the finance committee. So I would like to just point out one of the most popular pages for the rest of you. And that is on page eight. And that is where you can see at a glance what happened last year. If you want to look at both, the last three lines under the General Operations Fund, you were, you only had to eat into your fund balance a little bit, and that's probably timing on spending your federal program money. But realistically, you were able to stay within the revenues that you received as far as your spenders. That's a good place to be because I was just doing a trends analysis on somebody today, and it seems like state aid is falling every year, and of course, federal revenue is falling every year. So your ability to maintain your facilities and run your operations within your current allocation, that's just business management. Now, I know the finance committee members were the only ones that had an opportunity to send somebody looking through the audit report. Does anybody have any questions for me, or need any further clarification?
Don't believe so.
No.
Okay. Then, that's really all up you to report. What I would like to let you know, and I believe that's what the finance committee did, your administration has a lot of checks and balances within the financial activity of your district. And it always amazes me when I see something new you're doing, or that you have added to your procedures to make sure that everything is being looked at at least twice, that you've got somebody who is overseeing what is being done. So your staff is to be committed to that.
Okay. Any questions? I think we're good.
Okay. Well, I appreciate you letting me interrupt you by screeching at you. And I hope the rest of your meeting goes well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you Pam.
Marvin, I'd like to draw attention to the board. You'll see there's a letter that was written to me, okay? And this is a couple of areas that are not part of the audit report because, you know, we have a clean audit. But anytime you do an audit, the auditor is going to find something that's what we pay them to do. And so there are a couple items which were brought to my attention. One of those has to do with warrants. And remember that the district, we don't issue traditional checks, we issue a warrant for payment. And those warrants have a date on which they expire, okay? And our, our bank cashed a warrant that was past its expiration date. Now, we owed the bill, okay? What should have happened is the bank should have not paid the warrant, and then we should have redone the transaction with the company. Brenda, you want to tell the board what this is about? I think it's, I find this kind of interesting.
What it was, was it was payroll deductions from our employees' payroll checks because the YMCA allows us to do payroll deductions for the employees' dues. Well, when I was closing out the year, probably March, April, I noticed that there were two outstanding warrants to the local YMCA. So I contacted them and said, you know, I don't think that you all cashed these checks for that month. And they assured me that we had, they had. So I kept, you know, working with them, and finally, they realized that, no, they had not received payment from us for our employees' dues for that month, which was like over a year old. So I thought, I worked really hard to get this taken care of, but what happened was they waited until after July 1st to cash the checks, so it made the Eastop warrants where, you know, so really, we should have, but it was our employees' money, we owed the dues, it was to the local Y, and we were just trying to get them their money. So that's why that we allowed those to go ahead and go through the bank.
Okay. And then the other one has to do with money that has been deposited at East, and that's been turned into the office and then not deposited on a timely manner. In other words, it's been kept overnight in an unsecure place, and we have taken steps to correct that.
Hope so. Forget.
Anybody from the finance committee have anything they want to add?
No, that, that covered it. Okay, do we want to go ahead and vote on 8.6, or go back to?
We can go ahead and vote on it. I would.
Okay. Need a motion to consider if the vote to approve or not approve, receiving the audit report from Wilson, Dotson and Associates auditing firm.
I'd like the motion approved.
Second. Have a second.
Second.
Robin. Call, real call vote.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Truch?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Dr. King-Kate?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Now we'll go back up to where we were, to the consent calendar. Motion required to approve the consent calendar is printed. 7.1 Agenda with commentary, 7.2 The Minutes, 7.3 Consent Agenda Agreements Under $10,000. Do I have a motion?
I'd like the motion approved.
Motion approved, but you, you have a second?
Second.
By Don. Call for the vote.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Truch?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Dr. King-Kate?
Aye.
Okay, very good. Okay, moving on. We have consideration of vote to approve or not approve the following district financial reports. Do we want to do all the others as well? Eight, that's eight one. Eight two is agreement with Safe Defend for Personal Protection System.
Let's do eight one Marvin, and eight two is a separate item.
Okay, eight one.
Yeah, I make a motion to approve the financial report.
And Don?
I'll second.
Have a second?
Yep.
David.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Truch?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Dr. King-Kate?
Aye.
Okay, moving on to agreement with, eight point two, agreement with Safe Defend for Personal Protection System.
We had Brett come up and introduce, we have a couple of guests with us to demonstrate to the board what this product is. You know, we're always looking for ways to make our schools as safe as possible, to prepare us for the unimaginable. And one of the big shortcomings, I would say, is we look at school safety, is, you know, what do you do when you have that intruder in the building? How do you respond to that? And we believe that this system is the missing link in that, as we try to make our schools as safe as possible. And so we brought those gentlemen here to explain their product to you, so you could ask them questions. Brett?
Well, I'm going to let him introduce himself. Jeff is the president of the company of Safe Defend, and he's brought some of the things that belong in that box, and he's going to show you exactly what those do. So Jeff, I'll just turn it over to you.
Thank you. I'm Jeff Green, I'm founder of Safe Defend. With me tonight is Doug Prezy, our lead trainer. Doug brings 20 years of law enforcement experience in our training element of Safe Defend. I'm a former elementary principal, and I'm a father of three. And after Sandy Hook, I realized that we need to be doing some things differently than we are. So I started spending a lot of time with local, state, and national level law enforcement threat assessment experts, and we realized there's two areas that really aren't effectively addressed. One, if there's a threat, how do we get the good guys with the guns there as quickly as possible? And two, what do we do till they get there? So that's really what I wanted to try to find a solution to. We feel that Safe Defend is uniquely positioned to not only empower staff to survive until law enforcement gets there, but we're able to get law enforcement there very quickly. We've had the system vetted by Dr. Pennington, several staff members, as well as the chief of police and their lead training officer. And that's why I get to speak to you tonight, because after vetting it through all of them, they felt that it was worthy of your consideration. What I wanted to do was bring into the classroom a system that's going to allow staff immediate notification to law enforcement, as well as immediate notification to staff. What this does is not only gets the good guys there as quickly as possible, it gives staff real-time crisis information to make a good decision in that crisis. The control access systems, camera systems, those are all very important, those are very needed. But what happens when the intruder is someone you allow in the door? And 80% of the violent attacks that take place at school are someone that we let in the door. So we wanted to have a system that's going to address that. So what we've done is put together a rather simple system. It's fingerprint activated, up to 15 staff members can be on the system. Once the system's activated, they have access to all of these items, as well as that notification piece is going out. So when it's activated, law enforcement is getting immediate notification, staff are getting immediate notification down to the room number where it's taking place. So what this does is allow staff that are in across the campus to get out. If it makes sense to do so, let's clear out 90% of our students and staff members, and let's, let's remove them as potential targets. For those that are much closer to the crisis, what this does, it allows them to be able to take proactive response in multiple ways. We have ways to escape and evade, we have ways to address trauma, if there's a trauma system. We also have ways to protect themselves and their students if, God forbid, we get to that point where they have to do that. So our system is very comprehensive as how we approach it. Our training element is very hands-on. We'll bring in trainers that will train them in every component of this system. I think Dr. Pennington's favorite part, but, I mean, something as simple as a high-intensity strobe light becomes very disorienting and disabling. And we train the staff how to use these types of tools, all less lethal, to be able to get themselves home at night. One of our current customers in Kansas City, I just met with them recently, and they had a very angry and aggressive parent in the building. And he came to me, the staff member came to me and said, you know, after we got it all resolved with law enforcement, we had a staff meeting, and what everybody said was, thank God we had Safe Defend. We had our boxes there that were, they never opened them. But it was just a matter of the fact that they had that ability to respond, and they had the training and the system in place to really help them. So what we'd really like to do is have you guys be the first one in Oklahoma. We're Kansas and Missouri, we're moving to Oklahoma, Texas, and wherever it takes us beyond that. We've had incredible response at some of the conferences, so we are going to be able to cross the country before too long. We'd love to have Ponca City be our inaugural Oklahoma district, and we want to prepare your staff, train your staff to be able to get themselves home, their students home, to hug their families at night. You want me to go do a quick?
Go ahead and go through the, tell what all of the boxes.
Sure. What we do is we start with that high-intensity strobe. This can be used a variety of ways. It can be used as a handheld. If you're not in the immediate crisis situation, you point it at the door, and I assure you, we can even run a demonstration. But if you walk through a door, even in a well-lit room like this, and you walk into that strobe light, you'll not see anything else that's taking place in that classroom. So that buys a teacher some, some moments. We have gel pepper spray, and we use gel for several reasons. It doesn't cloud, it has really good range, and it gives staff members the ability to create almost a vaseline effect over the eyes. So not only do you get the pepper spray effect, you get the ability to basically blind the individual coming in. We have an expandable baton with a window break on the back. This is, becomes a very effective tool when you've been able to create and disable the individual coming through, as well as it gives you that option, once you have that information that says, hey, makes sense to get out, use the window break and get your students out as well. And you can clear the window with the baton as well. We have flex cuffs, which will allow a staff member to detain the individual, to keep them from going any further in the building. We have a high-vis vest, which is from the law enforcement perspective, lets them have immediate recognition of who's supposed to be there, to help them determine the good guys from the bad. We have something as simple as a whistle, which even though, when the system's activated, will know down to the room number, but that whistle allows law enforcement to hear over the chaos of the moment, where they need to go to help, get help there. And then we have a trauma kit. And when, we have an EMT, search and rescue certified individual that comes in and handles the trauma response. What you don't know, or really think about, is in a trauma situation, the EMTs are not going to be able to come in on-site until actually law enforcement has cleared the way. So anytime you can help train staff, and by moments, you're going to be saving lives. So what we wanted to do is create a comprehensive response option. The great thing about our system is they're all optional. You don't have to use A, B, and C to make this effective. At the very base level, you activate the system, helps on the way, and you've notified the rest of the building. In addition, anything you're comfortable with, use. Make it, be able to be effective and be able to respond. So it's a, it's a system that gives staff a huge empowerment piece, and that's what we hear over and over again after we complete our training. In addition, parents really feel it gives them peace of mind, they actually feel like their teachers can fight for their kid. So that's really our system. It's like an AED, it's like a fire extinguisher. We hope you never use it. We want it to sit for 20 years and never be activated. But just like that AED and that fire extinguisher, if you do need it, you're glad you have it. So what kind of questions you have for us?
Talk about notification, go into more detail how it actually works and who is notified.
Yeah, absolutely. What we're able to do is notify everybody at the building level, all the staff members at the building level, all the district-level individuals from each building.
If we're all teachers, how does each teacher know?
Text and email alert. Sirens going to be screaming in the office, too, once the system's activated. We can even strobe classrooms, which I don't think that's something you guys are considering now, but down the road, we could even strobe classrooms, so there's immediate notification that way.
That would be something we would have to do, it doesn't come with the system.
Yeah, the strobing doesn't, but everything else does. As far as the text and email and siren, yes, absolutely, that's with the system.
Pre-program everybody's cell numbers or something.
And one of the cool things we talked about with the police chief, is that we can actually put all of Ponca City's police department on the text alert, even though we're going to have a 911 call that's going to go out, it's going to come through our monitoring company. And we've had it tested in several of our places, it runs about 22 seconds to hit dispatch for the full information. But in four to five seconds, and Dr. Pennington and Mr. Smith was able to see this in San Diego, that text alert to your phone comes in about four to five seconds. So we can have all your law enforcement officers have their, get the text and email alert, so if they're off-duty but close to the building, they're going to be able to immediately respond in that crisis as well. So we program the individuals in for each building. We can program the district staff on all buildings, we can program law enforcement on all buildings, so they'll get those text and email alerts as it comes in.
So your control center will call to 911 local?
Yes, it'll go through, we use Rapid Response out of New York, which is a nationwide monitoring company, and they have, it'll auto-populate, they'll make the phone call, down to the room number, the building, the address, down to the room number where the system was activated. While that's going on, the text and email alert is coming as soon as it hits our panel coming through. So that's why the text and email alert's faster, but it's still, we're talking less than 30 seconds. The great thing about that is it frees staff up to manage the crisis. They have 20, 25 students in that classroom, they don't have to be on the phone trying to get that 911 call vetted. They can manage the crisis with their students, and allows them to make good, informed decisions.
How detailed is the text that goes to law enforcement, staff, all those people? What does it tell me?
It'll say alarm, it'll say the building, and it'll say the address, and it'll say room 201. So.
And that's by just sliding their finger over that?
Mm-hmm, just by swiping their finger.
When the box opens.
When the box opens. With 15 fingerprints in there, you can have the principal on every one, you could have custodian facilities on every one. If you have multiple staff members that come into the building, or into that classroom, they can all be programmed into the system.
So is it Bluetooth to a call system of some type to go out?
It's wireless to a panel, we install a panel in each building, it's wireless to that panel, and then that panel's cellphone out. So if we can't get a wireless signal through, we just run 182 wire to it, to a repeater. So school buildings are all uniquely designed with their materials. Sometimes we can be sitting in one room and can get a signal three blocks this way, but we can't get it in the next room. So we can, have ways we can handle that.
Where's that box sit, on the desk?
Our ideal location is by the door, and that's what we recommend, if possible. Schools, all classrooms aren't always set up that way, but for this very reason, is typically a school safety plan involves locking that door, shutting those lights out. If you can't get out, be able to do that. So having that system very close to you makes a lot of sense, but that doesn't mean that's where it needs to be. We have schools where they have, put them behind the teacher's desk, somewhere where it's accessible, where they're not going to stack a bunch of stuff on it ideally, but, and it secures down, so students can't take off with it. So it's, our ideal recommendation is close to the door.
You know, I think there's probably some concern, I mean, you know, and we've talked about this, but I think you need to talk to the board about this. You know, would teachers really use it? I mean, we're talking about, and I don't want to offend anybody here, but the vast majority of our staff are female. A lot of them are early childhood, elementary, you know, they gather those children around them, are they really going to be, are they going to use this in a crisis?
Great question. What we found from our training overwhelmingly, and I've given a lot of professional development opportunities in my, my career as a principal, and we always have that post-survey. If you don't ask the questions correctly, you get a yes, no, for the vast majority. I mean, you get the ones that hated you to write a lot, and then the ones that liked you to write a lot, but very rarely do you get a comprehensive. In all of our training surveys, I mean, 95% of them come back, teachers say, I hope I don't have to use it, but I'm glad it's there. And what, the way we've created this system, is if there's something they're not comfortable with, they don't need to use that. The flashlight and the pepper spray are very low intensity as far as interacting with a bad guy, but really can buy you moments, buy you time, give you an advantage in that situation. If you use the baton, if you use the cuffs, you have that option to use what you feel you need to in that crisis situation. From 35-year-old, 35-year veterans with multiple grandkids are coming back and telling us, I'm glad it's there, to the new teachers coming out, they feel very empowered once they see this system, because it gives them choices, it gives them options. And some of them, when we started training, are like, I'd never use that part of it. But after all the training's over, it becomes a big team-building thing, and they're like, yeah, that was my favorite part of the whole thing. So it's always been very interesting as we go through trainings to see. Did that answer the question?
Mm-hmm.
What other questions you have?
The box didn't have to be open for her to swipe it?
No, actually, the box will be closed, and they swipe it, and that opens it. That's the way we can control access to it.
That then activates the system.
That activates the system. That way, students can't have access to it. Now, if a student had a crowbar and 15 minutes, they could probably break into it, but then I'd wonder why a student had a crowbar and 15 minutes to, to be in the school. But if it gets opened, the other thing, too, is even if they do break into it, law enforcement's on the way. And the other great thing about it that we really like, and law enforcement really likes, is it really minimizes false alarms, because what it does is it controls access to who can set the alarm off. So you don't have a panic button in the middle of the hallway, and any student can walk by and hit it.
Questions? Come on Judy, you're our teacher.
I was just sitting there trying to think what my kids would be doing when I was doing all that.
Well, if typical school safety, no, that's a great question. The one thing is, it keeps you from having to be on the phone and trying to make that phone call to get help there. And so you can manage the system. One of the things we do in our training, which is really powerful, is we'll set, early on, we'll have, we'll find a teacher who's comfortable with doing this, but then we'll get probably the biggest, toughest PE teacher, coach that we can find, have them walk out of the room. And then, before we even start the training, we'll set that strobe light pointing at the door, we use a squirt bottle with just water only, and a swim noodle that we cut down, and that individual with the squirt bottle and the swim noodle, when that person comes through, takes them completely out of the game completely. So they're able to be by the door, have a very effective response, if they choose to use those tools in response, and can empower someone at that level. More likely, you're going to have your kids off in a corner if you're not trying to use the optional ways to get out. But the other thing we really stress, is if you have that information that it makes sense to get out, get out. That's what we want. You know, run, hide, fight tends to be kind of the three words that we hear a lot in that situation. But it only makes sense to run if it's safe to do so, or if it's likely safe to do so. We give that information, real time, to the teachers to make that decision. I want to clear them out, if we can clear everybody out. For those that are close to the crisis and need to have a different approach, that's why we give a variety of tools in that regard, too. Did that answer your question? Sort of.
One of the great things about the system is that it takes the principle of the fire alarm, which is pull the fire alarm, attend to your kids. This does the same thing. Swipe your finger, attend to your kids, okay? Now, if you need to get out a window, everybody loves to say, take a chair and break a window, but you're not going to break through these windows. If you guys haven't been in your own buildings, they're shatterproof, I mean, they're designed not to break. That's what that break does. If you're trapped in your room, and the person's on the other side of the door, it gives you some tools to empower you. That's what we're looking for. So you say, what are you doing with your kids? The first thing you've done is you hit that trigger, police are en route, every person in that building knows what's going on, alarms are going off, lights are flashing, we all know that there's an intruder, now you can address your kids. If you need to fight, you can fight. You need to escape, you can escape. That's what it gives, it gives you the options that you need.
And one of the things in the training, we're not asking teachers to go out in the hallway and take on this individual. We're not asking you to do anything other than follow your school safety plan. What we want to do is empower staff, that if they have to get to that point where they need to protect themselves and their kids, they have options. We want to empower them to get out of that situation, if they can get out of that situation with that information. So what are they doing with their kids, I guess, the way I'd best way answer it, the best they can in that crisis situation? Whether that's helping throw them out windows, and getting them out of this situation altogether, or being there to protect themselves as much as they, they're comfortable with, to hopefully get everybody home at night.
Why do we not lock our doors once the classroom starts?
David, our doors do lock.
They do lock?
Yeah.
But our teachers locking them?
Well, they lock on.
Not the outside of every classroom door.
I'm talking about each classroom.
Brett, you want to address that?
Some of the teachers do, and some of them don't. At this point, we haven't made a mandate that tells them they've got to lock their doors all day and night. They're still just trying to have school be as normal as possible. But right now, no, that's, we're not locking every door, but they have ability to, anytime they want to.
Do they lock from the outside, or from the inside?
They lock from the inside.
That's good.
I think the alarm part of this is real good, I don't think the defense department worked that much. I think, I guess to my question, we put all that money in those new entryways to every school?
Mm-hmm.
So what we're saying, that that's failed, and that they're now entering the classroom, right? And so, I mean, swiping the deal was gonna get them to that place. I agree on that. I don't think there's a woman teacher in the world that would fight. I'm sorry, I just, I don't, I disagree with that. I mean, I don't think she would try to defend. I think she would swipe the thing, that's why I wanted to know where that box was.
Yeah.
So she could swipe it and at least alert everybody. Opening that and doing all that, man, that takes some.
Well, those are great points, those are great points. Two things that I would just say to consider. Outside of Seattle this year, when we had the students stand up in the cafeteria, a first-year teacher, I think she was five foot nothing, started walking right towards him when he started, and he saw her coming, and he ended at that moment. So she was willing to stand up without any protection options. For me, the protection options really stemmed from Sandy Hook. When the principal, the counselor, and the psychologist all came out of their meeting and went after Adam Lanza, tried to approach Adam Lanza to stop it. And for me, it's easy to be a Monday morning quarterback, and that's not what I'm trying to say. Would it be different? I don't know. But they had, they were willing to step up, put their lives on the line. Only one of them survived, to help protect their students and staff. And so for me, it became, what if they would have had some options? What if they would have had that ability to immediately notify those first-grade classrooms so they could have been in a better position to defend themselves? What if they would have had some options against Adam Lanza walking in? And by no means am I saying how this would have worked out, because we don't know. But that's what really stemmed for me is, we're seeing a shift. And that's one thing we're getting from our feedback and our training. Teachers are feeling empowered. They feel vulnerable right now. They feel like they don't have a lot of options. And this, you know, if you don't use it, don't use it. Don't use it. But I guarantee you're gonna be glad it's there if you need it.
Dr. Kincaid, I could, as a defensive tactic instructor, as a certified active shooter instructor, I can tell you with almost ninety percent certainty, every female teacher's gonna take that pepper spray and douse this guy. And the one thing that that does is it takes control. He's in control, he's doing whatever he wants, he's got a plan, he's got a vision. The moment that his eyes start burning, the moment that his glasses are all fogged up from this Vaseline-like gel, all of a sudden, he's gonna go into a panic. It's gonna change his mindset, it's gonna turn the tables, and that's what we need. The pepper spray's there for a reason. The baton, you might be right. A lot of the people won't do that. We try and get through some of that, but this is practical, not tactical training. We aren't training these people to be tactical officers. We're just trying to buy time, take the distraction. The flashlight, the strobe, is designed to distract them. The moment they come in, they look right at the light. We could test it right here, and if you wanted, you would see. You cannot not look at that light. Our eyes are conditioned to look at it. That's movement, and it's light. It's going to overpower them enough time for them to spray that pepper spray right at them. That's what we're looking for, is give them something that when they've locked themselves in that room, and he decides to come through that door, you've got options.
Marvin? I've got several concerns. At any given time, we probably have fifteen to twenty to twenty-five percent of our teachers are substitutes. They won't be trained, they won't be thumb-printed to be able to get into the box. So automatically, fifteen to twenty percent of our rooms, that box won't do us any good.
That's a great point.
Okay, well, go ahead, go ahead and address that.
Our suggestion is this, if they haven't been trained, don't put them on the system. And it's still going to be, you're still going to have coverage in that building from everybody that's around them. And I get that that's a high number. If you have a long-term sub, there's a couple of different ways. One, we're building online modules now where they could have that training. We've spoken to the Ponca City Police Department. I guarantee that they're gonna help if we move this direction as far as helping be able to continue training down the road. I guess I guarantee, we haven't confirmed that, but I know that they're more than willing to help. So we can help train your substitute, long-term substitute staff as well. And programming somebody takes five seconds. It's very easy to get somebody new programmed into the system. So if it's just a one-day thing, I agree. But we still have coverage all around that room. We still have coverage in a variety of places to be able to help, so.
And I admit, it is a good notification system. Another real concern I have, I'm not law enforcement, so don't take this wrong. We're in a room, I'm over here, the box over there, the bad guy comes through the door with a gun, I have maybe three to five seconds to do something. I don't think our teachers are gonna be able to get to the box timely before bad things could be happening. I mean, that, that's just the facts.
No, that's another great point.
They're not gonna be near the box when it happens.
That's another great point. And this is, we cannot guarantee that bad things will not happen. If somebody wants to come in and do bad things, somebody's probably gonna get hurt or worse. What this system does is really mitigates that, that damage. We're able then, even if that staff member isn't the one next door to them, is hitting their system, setting their room up, notifying the rest of the building. And so what we're able to do.
Assuming she hears the clatter or whatever going on.
Right, absolutely. It won't take long before the sound of that, that crisis taking place is going to alert them. So without a doubt, we can't put this box where we think the teacher would be in a crisis, and that's a great point. What we do is we really work to mitigate the loss of life as much as possible. We want as many staff members and students getting home. If, if somebody wants to stand up in the middle of class and hurt some people, some people are gonna get hurt. But if we can keep that down, that number down, it's still a tragedy, but it could have been a lot worse, and that's our goal.
Yeah, and contrary to what your training has shown, I've polled several teacher friends, and I haven't got a one to say they'd use it yet. Not saying there won't be some.
Sure.
But I think the majority, I'm like Dr. Kincaid, I think the majority of female teachers are gonna become the mother hen, draw the little chicks in, and try to protect them under the desk, in the closet, wherever they need to go.
Well, and that's.
That's gonna be their first, that's gonna be the female reaction, or the male for that matter, too.
Well, that's, the great thing about this system is even if they choose not to use the flashlight and even the pepper spray, which are, again, really low threat. One, they're gonna have information, they'll use that window break to get, potentially get out of that scenario altogether. There's a trauma response, there's a multiple ways that they can still help and provide support. At the very basic level, if we can open the system, get somebody to notify, get that building notified, get the police notified, we're saving lives. And I completely understand it, what, out of context, it's hard for somebody to say, "Oh yeah, I would love to use all this stuff because I haven't seen it." But I'm telling you, in our training, once they go through it, even the ones that have come in said, "Man, I didn't sign up for this, I'm not a law enforcement officer." When they walk through all that training, I've had them come up over and over again saying, "This is the best training I've had as a teacher."
And, you know, I, I agree with Dr. Kincaid. I, I think a very pliable defense would be lock the doors. You know, spend the money, if we need to spend money, to secure the outside doors. But every classroom, it's my understanding, has a lockable door from the inside. I think those doors ought to be locked all day long in class. That, to me, it's almost easier to keep the bad guys out of the building than to try to do something after they get in. Although this, this would work, I'm not saying.
Sure.
I'm not talking bad about the system, but it, it would be so simple to just lock the doors.
Well, we want you to do that as well, absolutely. You know, this isn't used in isolation, this is used with everything else that's available to you. We want to create those time barriers, which is what doors are. We want to, we want staff members to be locking those doors. We want all of those things. I, I don't want you to get to the point where you're using this.
Yes, we don't.
And so what we want to do is have it available if you need it. God forbid, if you get to that point and you need it, it's available. If you choose not to use it, you choose not to use it. But you have information that's gonna help you make a good decision. Can I get out the window if I can't get out the door? Locking that door's gonna buy me some time to get everybody out. So locking the door, we absolutely advocate that as well. That's a great point.
One last question. In two thousand and thirteen, Oklahoma Legislature developed an OSSI, Oklahoma State, or School Security Institute, which is a division of Homeland Security for Oklahoma. Have they seen this, or have they vetted it, or looked at it, or anything?
We have not approached them yet, so, no, they have not.
Okay.
I would like to add, just a couple of things. I haven't read the OSSI report, but I know that in Missouri, they, there's training that's going on, and then there's also national training, and that tells teachers to take a fire extinguisher and use it as a weapon. It says, the NEA says, "Get bug spray and keep it in your drawer and use that as a weapon." Use your scissors, things like that. And those are the things that, what we're telling our teachers now. And one of the great things about this is it is optional, whether or not you use this or not. But what it does is, you know, yes, locking the doors. Columbine, they actually had a plan, they started the whole thing in eleven-twenty, which was during the lunch hour. So they knew when all the students would be out of the classrooms, which is one of the things. We're talking about, you know, you guys have done a phenomenal job working on the entryways to the schools and making sure that all the doors locked by just push button. That was a big thing, because it's Sandy Hook, they were trying to use keys. Those are the type of things that are, that I really commend you on, that you've done that. What we're talking about here is this is no different than a fire alarm. If you had a fire alarm in one side of the building, how do you notify everybody on the other side of the building to evacuate? This is the same thing. Adam Lanza parked his vehicle out of range of the front office, but in range of three classrooms. Unfortunately, none of those teachers saw what he was doing, but he was pulling a shotgun and an AR-15 out of the trunk of his car. If one of your teachers saw that, she could run over and lock her door. But how does she notify the rest of the building to lock down? And all your rooms have, all these forty, you know, I'm sorry, all the eleven buildings that you have, have windows. What do you do when the teacher sees something coming? What do you do when the teacher hears something already going on over in first grade area or the fifth grade area, and she wants to notify everybody else? That's what this system does above everything. We put fire alarms with fire extinguishers right next to them. We don't tell the teachers they have to use the fire extinguisher, but it's there if they want it. This is the same thing. Just hit the alarm. That's the number-one thing. We've had, a third of the expenses of schools these days is expended on making sure that things are not flammable, that we have fire alarms and sprinkler systems and all that. We haven't had a fatality in a school since nineteen fifty-three. In the same timeframe, we've had over two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand casualties in our schools. It's all about notification and getting the, getting the police there as quickly as possible.
These are great questions, and I appreciate them. And what we've found as we've come through, that all of those get addressed through our training and through the way we handle it and empowerment. But we certainly want to make sure that this system works for you. What other questions you have?
How many schools do you have that have?
We're in Kansas, a couple in Kansas, a couple in Missouri. We actually have three. We're at board, here tonight, we're in board, at a board meeting in Texas tonight. We've got two other verbal confirmations from Oklahoma schools that we're going to board soon. What we wanted to do, when I rolled this out, we started very small. I needed to make sure it worked. So our very first customer was a library. We put in two, two units. Worked great. Our next customer was a private Christian school. We've got twenty-five units in there, and it's working better than we ever would have predicted. And that was actually the school that said that they were glad that they had their safety fence boxes when they had that out-of-control parent. So we're actually at the level where we're ready for large districts now. It's been vetted at various levels. We've got, we're gonna be, like I said, we've got two other verbal commitments to go to board in Oklahoma, including you guys, and we're in Texas right now. Very strong possibility we're gonna end up in Kentucky soon, too, so.
You, you hit on a point, made me think of something. I know the original proposal is for every classroom. Obviously, we're talking about money.
Sure, absolutely.
It's a big expenditure.
Sure, absolutely.
Nearly a quarter of a million dollars.
Sure.
Okay? Has anybody thought about putting it in the two or three rooms near the access or egress points of a building, by the doors? The first two or three rooms? I mean, do you really need it upstairs on the third floor of classrooms? I don't know.
No, great question. Here's, we, actually, the great thing about this system is we can phase it in if that, if that makes the most sense. We could bring it in, and if you guys want to expand as you go, we can absolutely.
Has anybody thought about that?
We have, actually. We have thought about it, because sometimes that, that initial capital outflow is more than you want to, to put out. So we can do it. The one thing that, the caveat we just want you to think about, is if it's that student that comes in and feels bullied, you don't know which classroom he's gonna stand up in. Or if you've got a domestic issue, or you've got a custody issue, you don't know where that classroom is that's gonna create it. That's the only reason we recommend having it in all classrooms. Because really, what we're trying to do is address the threat from within. The control access systems and the funneling, that is great to keep those guys out that we don't want to come into our schools. We want to address the opportunity that says, "Hey, what if we let the bad guy in?" Because it's somebody that's supposed to be there, it's that parent, it's that spouse of a teacher. It's that student.
I still look at the strobes. There's something about the strobes. Maybe not one in every school classroom, maybe one in every corridor or every hall. Takes a group of, so they, so if there's kids out in the hall, they can see that flash. You know, what I'm saying, outside room, and that's having an every, every rise door. I'm thinking of like in the middle of the corridor or the hallway of whatever that wing.
And we can absolutely, and another recommend, absolutely, we can do that. And another recommendation is put them on the outside doors. If you've got PE classes or recess going on outside, you don't want to send those kids back into, you know, potential tragedy. So that gives them immediate notification to follow away to. And so we, we can expand, or, I mean, the great thing is the system is just very customizable to whatever you guys need. Any other questions?
No other questions.
Well, I really appreciate your time tonight. Thank you very much for the consideration. You guys brought up some great questions. Hopefully, I was able to answer them for you. And you guys have, take care. Thank you.
Marvin, I would like to make a motion that we table this for the time being, pending an OSSI review of the product, and probably more discussion internally. And I would also, as Dr. Kincaid mentioned, I think we ought to poll the teachers and the principals and see, I'm still concerned about use, I'll be honest. I'm still concerned about how much is this gonna be used. And maybe we don't need every classroom, I don't know. I just, I just think we need, there's not an urgency per se. And, you know, for a quarter of a million-dollar expenditure, I think we need to make sure we know what we're getting into. So I would make a motion, not that we kill it, the plan, but we just table it. And I would really like Kim Ed Carter and some of those guys in his group down there, that's the Oklahoma Homeland Division group, to look at the, you know, come back and say. They may say it's the greatest thing there's ever been, I don't know.
And I'm more than happy to come back and present to your staff or your principals if that's something that makes sense, you know, we're absolutely able to do that as well, so.
We have a motion to table. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion's been moved and seconded. Call for.
Mrs. Truitt? Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Let's see if we can't get everybody's questions answered and everybody on board. So I like that it's heading in a good direction.
Yes.
But it is very expensive, and I think we've got some, we've got some concerns that need to be addressed.
Absolutely, I appreciate that, and that's not a problem.
Appreciate you coming.
Absolutely. I'm really happy to help.
Brett can get, get you in touch with Oklahoma City group of the school. He's, you'll like him, he's an ex-placeman for thirty-five years that's had an adopted director of the Homeland Security Group now.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate you.
Sure. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Eight point three, consideration of and vote to approve or not approve participation in an education rally for public education on March thirtieth, twenty fifteen, at the state Capitol.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion's been moved and approved. Call for the vote.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Truitt?
Aye.
Okay, very good. Eight point four, consideration of and vote to approve a change to the twenty-fourteen, twenty-fifteen school calendar. This would be the two, make the changes to allow for the day off for the rally.
Marvin, on that issue, we also had some language in there dealing with, in case we would have adopted tonight, the safety fence, to be able to do some training for staff. And since we've tabled that, then we don't need that second paragraph. So all we need is a motion to, to make a change, or to use, to change the calendar and for the May eighth, twenty fifteen designated snow day to be come March thirtieth.
I'd move that we accept the first paragraph of eight point four.
It's the easy way to do it.
I'll second.
Seconded.
Dr. Kincaid?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Neeson.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Tru.
Aye.
Mr. Clark.
Aye. Very good. Eight-point-five, board to consider and take action on a resolution determining the maturities of and setting a date, time, and place for the sale of six billion, five thousand dollars general obligation building bonds of the school district.
Motion to approve, eight-point-five.
Motion by Don, is there a second?
Call second.
Judy, call for the vote.
Mr. Neeson.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.